Well, that's good.
All right, Banning County Board of County Commissioners are now in session. The adjustments on the agenda is postponement of the 10:30 and 10:45 hearings until further notice.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the amended agenda.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. First item on the agenda today is Board of Commissioners' invoices, Commissioners' report invoices. I looked through them, I had a couple of questions and I got them answered.
Motion? Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Commissioners' invoices as presented.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have payroll for 10-07 to 10-20.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the payroll as presented.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have alcohol licenses. And then we have, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the alcohol licenses.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a salary rate approval form. Turn me off again, turn a star.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the salary approval form as presented.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that completes it. Claims part, we'll go into our work session. First item on our agenda is a notice to go ahead and serve a trespass notice. Any questions about it?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the trespass notice as posted.
And we don't need to sign it, we just up here with it, so. We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ryan?
Is that the item that...
PTO, Policy Action Item?
We talked about that on Tuesday.
That's what I thought.
So, I don't have any additional from what you asked.
Okay. Okay. So then we have a letter from the assessor's office wanting to get rid of some equipment. Any concerns there?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I would move that we authorize the assessor's office to dispose of the equipment as requested.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jesus, not here. Scott?
Good morning, Commissioner. Scott Crowder, Event Director, Business Manager.
Chaney Quarter, Event Manager.
Hey, we have two items to discuss with you today. First, we'll discuss the request by New Horizon Schools.
Superintendent Douglas Howell, Port Talbot Public School District.
So, last year, we had, we held all the high school graduations up at the amphitheater. This year, they're requesting to hold the New Horizon graduation up there. The only thing we had last year was the weather. Was the weather was just a concern. So, that's why they just want to do the one graduation up there instead of all the rest of them. And they are requesting a fee waiver to use the venue. From our standpoint, I know this is a question of what we talk about, is cleanup is not really a big issue, depending on the, just setting up and tearing down chairs and kind of getting the venue to where they can use it, takes time for our staff. So, that's the only real issue we had. I think last year, for all the graduations, there was a fee of about $500. I think that's what you guys did. The unfortunate part is, is whether there's one graduation or four graduations, the work's the same. So, I just want to present that information to you guys to make your decision.
What's the, this is for the amphitheater?
Yes.
And the normal fee is what, $2,500 for the day?
Yes.
That's my only concern, same as last year, is that we cover our costs in setup and take-down. So, do you feel like that $500 is appropriate for that? Because if it's only $300, granted, it's not the thousands that they normally expect.
Sure. It's just work, right? So, it's hard to say that the $500 is covered. It's just work that we've got to go in and pull the chairs down. We don't keep the chairs on-site, so we transport them from B building, we load them up there, transport them over, unload them, and then we have to load them all back up and take them over. So, I think the $500 is a fair assessment for time and equipment, that kind of stuff.
Superintendent, would you be okay with that? If we just cover our costs on that?
You bet.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
No, no. And I was wondering about splitting that, putting it in half, and then have it a day where the school comes up and does a cleanup day or something of that nature. I don't know. I don't know if that's possible, but we're always looking for people to come up and help clean up. We're always looking for people that take a little pride in that facility and call it their own a little bit. And I, I don't think it's a bad idea to have these high school kids come up and say, "Yeah, I helped clean this up." I, you know, I sure don't want to come up and mess it up after I cleaned it up. I don't know, it's just, that's a thought I was having.
I think that's a great idea.
I definitely am in favor of that. Would that be something...
Oh, sure, you bet. Yeah, I don't know about a full day, but if we can schedule maybe a half, two or three hours of school-wide, yeah.
Yeah.
Cleanup, community service, well, we won't call that, but, right?
Yeah, that's a different, different meaning. But, but that's what I was thinking. I mean, we've had a lot of vandalism, and I'd like these youth to know that it's a beautiful park and you get to utilize it, and it's yours, and, you know, take ownership. That's, I don't...
I would certainly entertain that, if everybody's agreeable to that. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the request for School District 25 to use the amphitheater with a fee of $250 and a request for three hours of...
School-wide assistance. Volunteer...
Volunteer cleanup, how's that?
Yeah, there we go, great.
Okay.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, the second request is, I guess, kind of twofold. At the end of a, at the end of this year, at the end of the year, we tend to have concessions, goods that we, that expire, that we just need to get rid of. We had talked, kind of, I guess, about maybe doing some sort of employee appreciation day. This is the flyer that Terry put together for us, our food and beverage manager, Nacho Average Appreciation Day, where we would essentially give that food to the staff of the county. We'd set up a day to say, "Hey, if you guys want to come up and have some free food and sit in B building," or something like that, that we would prepare and then just serve some of that excess food.
If you can't give it back, it's going to be outdated. I, yeah.
Anything, anything that we can get rid of, or give back, or get credit for, we have. So, that doesn't, that is not the case with this stuff. Either, this is, this is either food that we have that we're going to dispose of, or that, in some cases, we may be able to roll some over to events next year, depending on how quick those events get there. But I think this is a, it's a good way also to show appreciation to folks that support us.
Well, I like this idea. The only other option that I would even think about would, would it be possible to give it to the food bank? Type situation.
Like to donate to the crisis center?
If it's about to expire, that's probably not the best way to go. I think this is probably a better idea.
What about the crisis center? That's a good suggestion.
So, part of the issue, like, as an example, it's, you know, like nacho chips, that's the reason it's not nacho, you know, whatever. They're going to be, we'll probably have to get rid of them by December. And so, to Commissioner Crowder's point, if you give them to somebody that they're going to, they're going to sit on them, then they're going to end up serving outdated food, so some, in some cases...
Outdated doesn't mean it isn't good. I've seen that post for a long time.
So, a lot of the stuff we have is like, it's packaged bulk, so it all depends on who you would have to give it to. So, if you gave it to a food bank, they're going to want to pass that out to people. You can't just give a giant bag of chicken to one person.
Yeah, we have tons of food going in there. And how often do we get a chance to do something like this for employees?
Well, and I, like I said, I like the idea. I think it's good.
And if this is something that works out, we'll probably present something similar every year, because we're, I would anticipate we'll have something like this. As our seasons grow, though, as we try to expand out our seasons, unfortunately, this party might get pushed back a little bit later. It might be a mid-December party if we can kind of work our, our events. But I don't anticipate that we will ever have a time that we won't have some, some ways to get rid of it.
What's the date on this?
We just throw it on November 8th, but we can, I think we probably need a couple weeks to advertise, you know, to let people know, "Hey, come on up, drink lunch, we'll, you know, have some hopefully delicious food."
Don't over text it that way.
No, Terry did a great job, she's, she's phenomenal. Again, we just want to go probably a couple of weeks out from where we're at.
No alcohol?
Nope.
Okay.
To be honest with you, our alcohol that we have to get rid of gets poured out. We just, we just don't...
You have to get rid of alcohol?
It expires.
It expires. So, they can't, so usually, well, there's a lot of logistics, but they can, they can do a refresh on us, right? Which is, if they take a case that's closed, they can usually take it back as long as it's not open. They can take it back and then they can bring us that exact same product, product back at a later time. So, like, most of the alcohol that we did not open, like the cases that we did not open, they are giving it, refresh us spring. So, they took back the old alcohol, we will literally get that exact same item back next year, but if we open it to serve individual...
You get the same item, a different, not the exact same...
No, no, it'll be a fresh, a fresher...
Better date.
Yeah. But if it's individual, once we've opened the cases and they're individualized, we can't, they won't take them back, nobody will. So, we do have alcohol that has to, and if we knew a way to get rid of that, I'd definitely sell that, too. We can't resell it, though, because of our license. It's got to be served for consumptions. So, I mean, you guys want to have a wild Christmas party?
I know a couple ladies.
But that is something to think about, is finding a way to deal with that, because we've kind of kicked around some ideas. But right now, until we have something, we literally just take it out and dispose of it.
Okay. Any problems having an appreciation dinner then, or lunch, or whatever?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we hold the employee appreciation event as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dave?
Kate Martinez, Public Defender. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, I'm proposing that you allow me to hire a social worker. I've thought about this quite a bit. It will have no impact on the budget. You know that I've asked for several years, and I know that Commissioner Moser is going to have concerns already that I'm coming in and asking for something that wasn't allowed in the budget. But what we've been able to accomplish is I'm not getting any applications for the attorney position. I've moved the one attorney that was in the workload grant, or that was in the formula grant to the workload. That frees up money in the formula grant. And when we think about this in concert with, and Commissioner Huff had a brilliant thought that I hadn't gelled, that hadn't gelled in my head, and he helped me with that. When we're doing the pre-trial release, folks, and the sheriff is trying to do some classes in treatment in the jail, we've got a lot of social work aspects. We've got two parts of a triumvirate kind of already in place. If, if the sheriff is able to have some classes in the, in the jail, and then I have a social worker who's doing a warm handoff, who immediately takes that person and gets them into another sort of treatment, and we start working on getting evaluations on that person, getting a bio cycle social, so a lot of the, the moving parts are already there, so that we can get this person directly into treatment, be able to more effectively represent them, as this has now become the norm in, in the country, to have social workers in the public defender's office. In fact, in, I was talking to someone in the Bronx, and they have almost as many social workers as they do attorneys, in an attempt to make sure people have food, that they have, that they have the services they need, that they're getting what they need to take care of their children. So, we're putting all of those, lining all those dominoes up, so that we can keep them out of the system in the long run. And then, we've had many conversations over the years about how many people I deal with where it becomes generational. That's another one of my goals, is to try and stop some of the generational problems, because we know that criminality is, in, in large part, a socio-economic problem. And I have, I have represented a grandfather, a father, and a grandson all at the same time. So, that's the kind of thing I would like to be able to stop. This will have no impact on the budget, the money is, has already been allocated, we would just be changing the title on one of the positions. So...
And you stalled my thunder. You said exactly what I'm going to say. Well, we're one month into, into this budget year, and here we are talking about changing positions or monies and, and stuff, and so, that's always a sore spot.
I'm, I'm aware, and, but one of the things that I had thought about, and I've mentioned this before, is that when we become state next year, the folks that are already employed should be able to stay. So, if I have this position filled already, and that's going to be the norm, then I will have somebody already working within that system. And amidst all the turmoil of having the state take us over and learning new computer systems, having all new forms to fill out, having a new, I mean, just from the ground up, we won't be training a social worker at the same time.
And this budget was sent to the PDC when we submitted all the budget information to them in July?
July.
In July. So, it was included as part of the budget submitted to the PDC as a social worker.
But we didn't add a position. We didn't add a social worker position in the budget.
No, but within some of these positions, it's a trade, because we took an attorney that was already budgeted for and made it a social worker in...
So, there should be some salary savings. There's some salary savings.
That's a part that needs to be in writing somewhere.
Right.
So that we, we just make sure that we're not coming back later and say, "Well, we still have this attorney position coming up." I'm just, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody.
I understand.
I've gone through this for the last few years, and month one or week one, people are coming in and asking for new positions.
And I won't let Dave, those are the only approved positions. I won't let Dave make any changes to those unless he comes before the board, or, well, and/or gets PDC approval, because the formula grant is the only one that we have flexibility in. The workload grant, we do not, so he cannot make changes in the workload grant.
So, so, my question is, so we go to the state this next year. The state doesn't approve this position, are we paying unemployment?
That's a question that we haven't answered on anything with the, sorry, what?
Go ahead.
That isn't a question that we have answered on anything. We don't have payouts figured out yet. We don't have unemployment stuff figured out.
And that's, that's why I'm asking these questions, is because I don't know what obligations we're going to have as a county when this all transpires.
Right.
And I don't want to add extra obligations. I hope everybody gets moved, I hope it all runs smooth. It hasn't always happened that way in the past. It just gives me concerns.
Statutorily, people get to stay.
And I can tell you that Ada County has several social workers. Cootinay County has at least one, and I know they're hiring another one right now. Canyon County has social workers. It is the norm in the system, so it's going to be expected.
So, then my next question is, I'd really like to see a job description. You say, you say we're, we're going to help out at the jail, they're going to help here, they're going to help there.
I, I submitted...
This is the job description.
Job description's in there.
Oh.
It's essentially Ada County's.
Oh, there it is.
While he's looking at that, you and I talked about this, and you know I'm in favor of this, because I, I feel like it's that missing piece of the triangle. So, how, how can we track, because the goal of Evy's program, and the sheriff's program, and this is to minimize recidivism.
Right.
How are we going to track that? And how can we keep tabs of that one individual that touches all three? Or how are you going to track that?
That's, that's going to end up in the case management system, and then all social workers end up having to keep statistics on those things, and they're going to have to track recidivism rates. That's, that's going to be the norm. And if the, if the commission approves it, I would also like, I mean, I'll talk to Joanne and have her help me figure out some of those pieces, because I'm not a social worker, but I plan on, if, if I can hire somebody, putting them immediately in contact with, with the people in Cootinay County and Ada County, so they can do some cross-training on how this is already done.
Okay. That would be, that would be my caveat to this, is if approved, which again, you know where I stand on it, that I see some type of plan for recidivism tracking, so I can see how effective these programs are.
Yeah, and, and we'll know, like, we recidivism track on all the people that get steered into treatment courts. We keep track of statistics on how many people get their cases reduced based on getting involved in treatment. And also tell you that, I know I've had attorneys spending five, six hours trying to get somebody signed up for Medicaid.
Yeah.
And that's time better spent by a...
Why are they doing that for?
So, we can get them into treatment. Because otherwise, they're not, if they don't have those, those benefits, and, and some of our clients are not intellectually strong enough to go through that process themselves.
Well, I would, I would just like to meet with you and Evy and the sheriff, and just kind of talk about where those crossovers are, so we can kind of see how the pieces will fit together and work together, and then, like I said, how, what the impact it does have on our recidivism rates going forward.
Yeah, and I would anticipate that there'll, there'll be meetings between the people running the sheriff's programs, and Evy, and our social workers, so that they can figure out how they're going to track those things as a group.
Yeah, yeah. I would just like to know how that works, because, again, if, if we don't impact our recidivism, then we're just...
Right.
...waving our arms in the air for nothing.
That, that's true. And then ultimately, I mean, it's always my goal to impact recidivism anyway, because I judge success on a client by never seeing them again.
Right.
I mean...
Right. I'm done with my questions.
I haven't seen on here, like, what's the pay going to be, or what grade?
My question.
We have a budget of a grade 14, so as long as it's that or less, it'll be covered.
So, if, if...
We have, we have social workers employed already by the county, so we're using the same pay band.
You're talking about the D6?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Well, if, I would just like to have a moment to just review and compare, just, just like I do with every other position in the county. And I, if you want, it could be today or tomorrow, right?
That's fine, sure.
To take that step, it's written into our procedures, and I'd like to follow that procedure.
Okay. Well, what about you? You said you want to meet with them. How much time, when, what?
Oh, this will be down the road a little bit, to, to meet with them, to figure out how it all ties together. So, we can't have that meeting until he has his person in place.
John?
No additional questions.
Okay. You two get together, and you could make, come back Tuesday if you have any questions. If not, it could just be on the agenda. And then we'll do a vote, then.
Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you. All right, let's talk about the Lander Building.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ben Kendall, Facilities Director.
Ashley Ford, Maintenance Technician.
We are just here to, just to make sure the commission knows...
Okay, guys.
Kind of the condition of the Lander Building. Kind of had a surge of repair requests and problems over there. We're like on the verge of needing to sink some significant money into that building to keep it going. We're only using maybe a third of the building right now, but we probably get more complaints from that building than any other. But I just want to talk to you guys just for a minute, just to make you aware. We have three rooftop units that are on the verge, multiple repairs this summer. And I won't go through the list of problems, but I think, I don't think it's possible to bring that building back up to where our standard is. It's with the foundation, starts there, and I just don't think it's repairable. We just wanted to talk to you just a minute about it, and I don't know if it's an option to sell something like that, but I think it's either sell it or sink some money into it, so I just wanted to stop by.
John, you had a discussion with Jason.
Oh, I was asking about something else, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, Di, right? About the Lander Building?
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I was thinking, I thought you meant this, I was just talking to him. Yeah. So, Jason said they're, of course, they're using it for the drug testing currently, and I think we had something on this that, did everybody get something from him on...
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't? Oh.
So, we're using a third of the building, is it just for the drug testing?
Yes.
And it's, how many days a week?
Depends on when they want to test.
I don't, I'm not sure it's just the drug testing. If I understood him correctly, you have the drug testing, and then there's a couple other people over there for some reason. Is that not correct? Because that was my understanding.
I don't know how I got, I don't, I didn't, I don't remember who was on this email, but it says Drug Court Coordinator Office Space. The two Drug Court Coordinators currently have offices at the D, oh, that's in D6. I don't know if he's wanting to move them over there.
Because, yeah, my understanding was, we shut that building down, the only people in that building was the conflicts.
They're gone.
And removed them after the threat.
Yeah.
And then the others was just that they was coming in and doing the drug testing.
Yeah, that's it. That's in the packet.
What's that?
Ford said it's in the packet, so you should have it.
Yeah, it is in the packet.
He is just proposing to move them in there from the current location of the City Center Complex?
Yeah, here it is.
So, this is the one that come from you, or from your...
I don't know who sent this one, I'm assuming this came from Jason.
Yeah, I think this came as a result of me asking about, what are they doing over there?
Drug testing right now is the only thing they're doing over there.
So, this is a, I would love to be rid of this building.
But I think we have to answer, before we can make such a decision, what are we going to do, what are we going to do with the stuff currently being done there? What are we going to do with the stuff currently being done there? Because I don't want to say, okay, we're getting rid of this building, and now because of that, we've got this, we're incurring a bunch of extra costs. So, I just would like to get that resolved before we move that.
I'm, I'm going to be a little bit more proactive and say that we make a motion to sell it at the earliest possible convenience, resolving that issue. So, we don't have to come back and say, what are we going to do? We've already decided we're going to sell it, pending finding an acceptable solution with the drug, because that is an issue. Because that was part of our contract negotiation with them, was providing that space. So, if we can't, for us, if we can't find an acceptable solution, that changes things. But I think our overall concern is, let's just make the motion to sell the Lander Building at the earliest possible convenient time or something to that effect.
Yeah, that's fine.
That way, we just don't have to come back and revisit it.
I'm good with that.
You okay with that?
Yep, yep. I want to move forward.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we sell the Lander Building at the earliest possible convenience depending on, or contingent on what we can do with the drug testing that's currently inside of it.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I just don't want to keep investing more money into, into it. I mean, you're our expert.
That's right.
Just keep doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Can we take a short?
All right, let's take.